Okay, welcome back to the meeting of the Planning Commission. We are now on item four. No, we're not on item number five, Oil and Gas Regulations.
Item number five CPC CA 12-0007-1, requested by the City of Colorado Springs Planning and Development Department Land Use Review Division to establish a new Part 17 Oil and Gas Regulations within Chapter 7 Planning, Development, and Building, Article 5 Administration and Procedures, and amend various provisions found in Chapter 7 Planning, Development, and Building of the Code of the City of Colorado Springs 2001 as amended pertaining to Oil and Gas Regulations. Planner Dick Anderwald.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. I wanted to go through a PowerPoint presentation to set the stage for the discussion this afternoon on Oil and Gas Regulations. And as Mark mentioned, the proposal is to establish new regulations for oil and gas operations within Chapter 7, which is the Planning, Development, and Building portion of the Colorado Springs City Code. First, a little background. The chronology that got us to this point really began last spring when Banning Lewis Ranch went into bankruptcy and the property was sold at auction. The third, northern third of the property was acquired by a bank and later resold to Oakwood Homes. The southern two-thirds of the property was purchased by Ultra Petroleum. The bankruptcy proceeding took place on the east coast, and Ultra challenged the annexation, the 1888 annexation of the Banning Lewis Ranch to the city, challenged that annexation in bankruptcy court seeking to avoid the annexation agreement, meaning basically their position was that we have no intention to develop the property as originally intended at the time of annexation. Our purpose is primarily oil and gas exploration. So, the court agreed to move that case to Colorado, and that is currently in litigation. Also, later in the fall, Ultra and Hillcorp Energy both applied for permits, both two in the Banning Lewis Ranch and others outside the city limits in the county, both within the general area presumed to be the southern extent of the Niobrar Formation, which is a shale formation at about 6,000 feet low grade. Council at that time was concerned that drilling companies might pursue exploration activity before the city had time to actually review and develop adequate regulations, and accordingly placed a six-month moratorium on new drilling permits which expired at the end of May. An oil and gas committee was created in January, met over a 14-week period, and we'll talk a little bit about their findings shortly, but they ultimately made recommendations to the city council, and that's really the genesis for our being here today. The committee findings generally were that regulation of oil and gas development is primarily a state function through the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, or COGCC. You'll hear us refer to COGCC quite a bit today, just a quicker way of saying the long name of the organization. The city can impose reasonable land use regulations that are not in conflict with and which can be harmonized with state oil and gas regulations. Important distinction, and that's the basis for the discussion we'll have on operational conflict. Requirements for building permits, access road maintenance, emergency response, fire protection plans, distances that buildings must be set back from wells are typically have been upheld as matters that fall within the purview of the local jurisdiction or the city. And also, local regulations that address noise abatement, visual impacts, and setbacks more stringently than the state have been struck down. City council met on June 28th and heard the report of the oil and gas committee. They acknowledged the work of the committee, they took public testimony, and they requested at the end of the afternoon that the city staff move forward to prepare draft regulations and bring them to you for public hearing. The Planning Commission received a general briefing by staff on July 12th on the general principles of oil and gas expiration. We held a work session on August 2nd where we brought to you alternatives in half a dozen areas that were thought to be within the, consistent with the operational conflict limitations and those that reached a little further and were not. Based on the general conversation of the commission guidance, we prepared a final draft which was reviewed with you last Thursday in preparation for the hearing today, and that is the draft before you. Major issues that we considered in drafting the regulations of highest primacy was to avoid operational conflict. We have a scenario where we have two applications within the city limits, both on Banning Lewis Ranch. We do not have evidence of a proven resource at this point in time, and the question really arose, do we want to create a challenge now, not knowing fully whether we really have a large resource or industry to manage going forward? So, the perspective of the city attorney's office staff has been that we avoid operational conflict, and that too was a recommendation of the oil and gas committee. Operators' early engagement with the city, and we'll explain why that's so critical and so important in this process. Location in residential areas was another area of concern. Development standards, which elements of the operation were reasonable to impose development standards on and what should they be? And then water sampling rules. The oil and gas committee, as did council, placed a high priority on protecting our quality of both our ground and surface water. And then lastly, inspections. So, we'll cover each one of these in a little more detail. First one, avoiding operational conflict. And simply, as we've spoken earlier, city regulations will be preempted if they impose technical conditions where no such conditions are imposed by the state, or where they are contrary to state law or regulation. So, in our code, in the draft that you're reviewing today, regulations have been constructed to avoid operational conflict, and instead, they rely heavily on the city's participation in the local government designee program, and also through the use of intergovernmental agreements between the city and COGCC to identify and protect, preserve community interests. Moving on to early engagement with the city, it's really critical that for the LGD process to function effectively, the interests of the city must be communicated to the operator as early as possible in the process. If our, if we can't impose specific standards related to those that are typically managed by the state, we can certainly make our interests known early in the process, and to the extent that the applicant incorporates those concerns into their applications, then they go forward through the state process and are, by definition, are part of the conditions of approval that are later enacted by the state as part of the state's approval. So, in that process, we, or in the code, in the draft code, we specifically laid out purposes of the meeting, and I'd like to review those with you. On page four of the draft, about halfway down the page, there's a heading, subheading "B," pre-application meeting. It's a mandatory requirement. What's not mandatory is the timing. We don't believe that we have the authority to demand the meeting, the timing for the meeting, but we did state preferably prior to submission of state applications, because that's where the local government's ability influences the greatest. And you'll notice there's about eight items that are listed as the purpose of the pre-application meetings. To discuss the location and nature of the proposed oil and gas operation, to explain our submission requirements and processes, to look at items that the applicant proposes to submit to the state that could be recognized and incorporated into the city application review process so as not to duplicate effort. To discuss federal and state terms and conditions that may have been imposed on similarly situated oil and gas operations. Then the key here is item number F, to discuss potential, or project impacts and potential mitigation, and to encourage the use of best management practices. Several jurisdictions lately have required best management practices, and those have been challenged by the state as a usurpation of state responsibilities by local government. But we believe that through the local government designee process and the early pre-application meeting, we can talk about best management practices, gain a commitment to incorporate those in the application, and carry them forward through the approval process. And then generally, review with the applicant to the review criteria that either the staff or the Planning Commission would utilize in reviewing their application. Location in residential areas. Municipalities may not totally prohibit oil and gas drilling. I think that was a finding in the Frederick case. But recently, the state has sued the city of Longmont over, in part, its prohibition on oil and gas operations in residential zones. They simply said, no drilling in residential zones. We did not see that as a viable option moving forward, and in a minute, I'll show you a map that I think brings to light that it's more important to look at regulating the use in a different manner than simply restricting it in residential areas. What we've done in this constructing, construction of the code is to require a review for operations located within 1,000 feet or less of a high-density area to fall within the purview of the Planning Commission. Those outside, or more low-density or rural-type applications would be reviewed administratively by staff. Either one of those levels of review is appealable to the higher level, ultimately to council and into the court system. This is a map that I'd like to spend a little bit of time on. I know it's, the scale is not as important as the points that need to be made here. I asked the GIS staff to put together a map that showed all parcels within the city, zone, residential, or PUD, that are 10 acres in size or more, and that are vacant. Now, the reason why I ask that is because the industry tells us that in order to drill within a shale formation and horizontally drill, that they need about 10 acres in terms of land area to set up for the drilling and for the ancillary equipment and supplies in order to conduct the drilling. So, as a practical matter, let's look at the property to the west of the red line, which basically follows I-25. There are a number of parcels there that are blue and that are 10 acres in size or larger, but they're also on steeply sloped land for the most part, and it would be very difficult to find a level piece of ground, or one that could be graded sufficient to permit oil and gas operations. So, we call that, for purposes of discussion, topographically constrained. Then you look at the center part of the city, which is primarily the developed portion of the city east of I-25 out to Mark Shuffle Road, where the black line runs north and south, and you'll see four large clusters of 10-acre parcels primarily owned by large development companies or UCCS. And the property that the UCCS owns that's portrayed on that map is across north Nevada from the new shopping center in Costco, which is all part of the planned campus expansion. So, again, you have property that while it could technically be suitable for oil and gas activity, the practical nature of the ownership, the implications of the future development, potential fulfilling developments, or supporting developments already occurred in areas like Flying Horse and Wolf Ranch, highly improbable that oil and gas expiration would occur in those areas. Then you get to the property on the far eastern edge, and in general, in a general sense, that's, we'll call that the Banning Lewis Ranch area. There are other properties there. Randy Case owns property at the bottom of the map that's, I think it's technically part of Banning Lewis Ranch, but he's not a Banning Lewis Ranch, it's not under the ownership of Ultra. And also, I need to explain a caveat at this point. When we asked for a printout of this information, the coding for the zoning inside of Banning Lewis Ranch is, I want to say, did not allow the portrayal of the non-residential parcels. So, what you're seeing there is an over-representation of residentially zoned land. It's probably a third, a third of the blue area is actually zoned for other purposes. But I think it provides a context that helps to understand that the vast majority of property within the city limits that would be suitable for oil and gas expiration is east of Mark Shuffle Road. The two stars on the map represent the two applications that were filed by Ultra last fall in December, reviewed by the state, the state has issued permits, the city engaged through the local government designee process, and was successful in having a number of conditions of approval added to those state approvals that I think, being our only experience with the process thus far, give us a fair sense of confidence in the effectiveness of the local government designee process. But I wanted you to see this map, I think it's a very important map in terms of understanding why this draft does not include a prohibition of drilling in residential zones, and rather than, rather it focuses on dealing with the impacts of operations near residential zones. Now, development standards, limited to the, and they're limited in this draft to those areas within city purview, primarily traffic impact mitigation and the requirement for an emergency response plan. The other areas that typically, for which development standards are typically cited in our, in our code, air, water, noise, and lighting are not, are, fall within the state purview, subject to COGCC rules, and are not addressed by this draft. Water sampling, as I mentioned before, primary concern of the oil and gas committee and of the city council. The courts have ruled that local requirements for water sampling are preempted by the state. El Paso County inserted language much stronger than the state's, and is currently in negotiations with the state to create an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, to basically employ the requirements of the voluntary Colorado Oil and Gas Association standards for pre-drilling, testing, and monitoring during the drilling process and post-drilling. We believe that to avoid operational conflict, that that is an appropriate direction for the city to pursue as well. And lastly, inspections. It's been a common statement amongst cities and towns throughout the state and counties as well, that given the proliferation of wells in recent years, and the number of inspectors employed by the state to cover those wells, that the frequency of inspections is not sufficient in local government's point of view to ensure the level of protection that its local citizens desire. The way this code was constructed was to provide us right of entry to enforce city regulations, and also, it does provide a provision, create a provision to allow us to enter into an agreement with the state, separate from the regulations themselves, to allow us to conduct inspections of state and federal operational aspects of the properly trained, where the inspectors would be properly trained and all that, similar to a recent IGA that was negotiated between Guinesson County and COGCC. The review criteria, whether it's the staff or it's the Planning Commission that is reviewing applications, applications would be subject to these review criteria. General catch-all, compliance with all city rules and regulations, which essentially goes without saying, but we want the operator to understand that there are a number of rules that fall outside of land use and zoning that the operator could be obligated to follow. But the second bullet, that the use does not conflict with master plan roadway, school, and park locations, very important point, particularly in Banning Lewis, where you have, the Arcuriel Road network is established, school sites are established, and parks, reservoir sites are all part of the original Banning Lewis master plan. We would want to, in the pre-application meeting, go over that information with the applicant, make them aware of what those, the existence of those plans, and ensure that their applications don't ultimately site in the middle of a parkway or other major thoroughfare. That the use does not conflict with existing or planned public utilities. We ran into that in one of the Ultra applications as we were evaluating it. It was located about 600 feet to the west of the SDS transmission line coming up from Pueblo, and required the crossing of that easement to get out to Highway 94 for trucks coming and leaving the property. So, utilities had some concerns, concerns which are incorporated into the conditions of approval that, that those public utilities be protected. That the use is compliant with the engineering criteria manual and the drainage criteria manual relating to the construction of berms, access roads, and the like, to ensure that we're able to sustain our requirements for our MS4 permit, which is the state-approved stormwater permit, and that we remain in compliance with that. That we don't overburden public facilities, and if we do, we will provide them, the operator will provide them as a condition of approval. Vehicular access is adequate. The use does not create traffic congestion. Kathleen Krager is here from city engineering, and will speak to the process that we'll be asking the applicant to go through in terms of creating a traffic impact study and a mitigation plan to address those concerns. Road and bridge impacts are analyzed. One of these, a rig towing, a drilling, or a truck towing a drilling rig adds the, one trip adds the equivalent of, as I recall, something like 60,000 vehicle trips. So, there is the potential, particularly on under-constructed roadways, and more often in rural areas than in urban areas, but the potential exists that there could be road and bridge impacts created from these operations that need to be analyzed ahead of time through the traffic impact study, and assurances obtained for, to return those facilities to their original condition, or pre-drilling condition. And that the use is otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare present, or future city residents. So, those are the criteria, were an application to come before you, you would be asked to consider in your fact-finding as part of the decision-making process. Having said all that, this, this code is built around a multi-pronged approach, and its effectiveness depends on, number one, early operator engagement with the city, that the operator's application is crafted in consideration of city issues and concerns. In other words, they take from that pre-application meeting, and the pre-application meeting, by the way, would involve city staff representative of the various areas of concern or expertise that the city has, as well as the LGD, as required that they be invited to attend as part of this conversation as well. So, there's an early level of interaction that takes place. And presumably, out of that, then the operator understands the local concerns, incorporates those into the application. The provision for Planning Commission review of applications in urban areas, I think, helps to provide for effective citizen engagement in the process, so that citizen concerns can be understood and communicated through the permit review process as well. Reliance upon state and federal rules in areas of potential operational conflict. I handed you a printout this morning from the Denver Post that was in today's edition that reported Governor Hickenlooper's comments yesterday, made at an industry meeting, where he outlined a set of new initiatives to oversee oil and gas operations in Colorado to create integrity and trust in energy development in four areas. And these are all areas that are really outside city purview, but have been demonstrated by our citizens, the oil and gas committee, and others, as being issues of critical concern to local residents. Number one was enhanced testing to assure well-bore integrity. If there's a potential for groundwater contamination, that's generally the place where it starts. There is a, in, later in the article, there's an explanation of the ability to do sonar testing, which is a new technology that is a higher level of testing than has previously been applied. The governor wants to look at that. Comprehensive water sampling before a well is drilled, that's been a concern expressed throughout this last six months by the committee and by local citizens. Controlling fugitive methane emissions from wells, another air quality requirement that is generally a federal air quality control standard. And then lastly, developing setbacks for wells in densely populated areas, which, again, we've tried to address by elevating the level of review to address the potential impacts rather than creating a prohibition, which we believe would be in operational conflict with, with the state rules. So, in summary, we're recommending that the ordinance be approved, establishing oil and gas regulations, subject to several modifications that have been brought to our attention. One was the deletion of two definitions in the definition section that are duplicative of definitions in the state regs, and don't add particular value to our local code, and then addition of a new section four on page 10 that clarifies the ability to take decisions forward on appeal to higher levels within the standard city practice. Are any questions that I can answer for the commission?
Dick, on this article from the Denver Post where Governor Hickenlooper is talking about the new initiatives, what, I skimmed through the article very quickly, but roughly how quickly will these issues be fleshed out and adopted?
Well, that's, that's difficult to answer. I know that about a year ago, an issue related to, oh, shoot, oh, the fracking chemicals was brought to the attention of the governor, and that actually was a rule that was amended to require the disclosure of fracking materials. So, once the process started, it was accomplished fairly quickly, I would assume, less than a year. That's, that's pretty quick in terms of legislative process. But I, we do have several folks here today, in fact, let me get to this next slide. I wanted to introduce some of the resources available to you for your deliberations today. We have other planning staff, we have city attorney staff, city engineering, and the fire marshal. Colorado Springs Utilities is going to be available by phone, and the El Paso County LGD, who was here earlier this morning, had another commitment. The oil and gas committee members, there's been several of them engaged in the process who are here today. And lastly, COGCC staff, who can perhaps address your question, Commissioner Gonzalez, about how long this type of a process would take. The governor did appoint a special committee, I believe in about February, and they met for about 60 days. One of the findings was that local government, it was a pretty well-balanced committee, industry folks, local governments, state DNR. folks, local governments, state DNR regulatory folks at the state level. And I think there was a general agreement that local governments needed to have a more effective means to engage in the process and that there should be a more effective use of the local government designee process made. So in, in putting this code together, we attempted to further that objective by creating an avenue for that, for the LGD to move forward, taking the, from the pre-application meeting, and I know I've gone well beyond your question, but I wanted to get another point in here. Taking the, laying out the city's concerns at the pre-application meeting, evaluating the application as it comes in, taking any missing pieces, if you will, forward to the state where we have the ability to request consultation with the Colorado State Department of Public Health and Environment, as well as COGCC. We did that on the two Ultra applications on Banning Lewis Ranch. We had a telephone conference call with, I would guess, somewhere between 10 to 15 people representing Ultra, COGCC, public health, the city, utilities, and at the end of a two-hour conversation, we came to agreement on all of, but one of the city's 11 concerns that were all effectively addressed in conditions of approval going forward on the two Ultra permits. So that's the, going back to the, the earlier, oops, right there, the multi-pronged approach, we have a, based on that experience, a, a high level of expectation that this collaborative process will yield us results that protect the public's interest and the environment going forward.
When an operator goes to the state to file their application, is our local government designee notified, or do we have to, as a city, be proactive in monitoring what applications are being put out there so that we know that we need to get involved? I mean, basically, is there any way for an operator to apply through the state, go through that process, without us even knowing that it's going to be happening in the city?
Well, we're fortunate that we have Nancy Prince here from COGCC, who is our local government liaison from the state. She was most recently a permit coordinator for the state. So I'm going to ask her to answer that question, because I think it relates to two different areas. One is, does the city get notice? And secondly, do citizens get notice? And I think the answers are different. I know we get specific notice. We have the ability through the local government designee process to communicate with people who've left us their email addresses and want to know when things are going on. But I'd like Nancy to, to address that in a little more detail.
Thanks, Dick. I wanted to say that I really enjoyed sitting through this morning's presentation because I live just a few miles away from that intersection, so. It was actually interesting to me. I've been with the state, associated with the Oil and Gas Commission, for the last three and a half years. First as a contractor, reviewing some of the environmental accidental spill reports and the remediation plans for cleaning them up. And then for about a year and a half, I worked in the permit group, as Dick said. As things became, it became more obvious that one of the best ways to help implement some of the issues that the state was facing was to really kind of encourage and increase the LGD program. And so they said the best way to do that was to have the local government liaisons, who would be a face with the local government designees. And so, as Dick is supposed to represent his constituency, the citizens of El Paso, or of Colorado Springs, I'm supposed to represent the state to you all. And when you ask me a question I don't know the answer to, I am happy to find the right person to answer them. So that's part of the way that this is all structured. The answer to the question specifically is that when a permit is approved, is deemed to be complete, from the state's perspective, when the applicant has submitted everything that they need to submit for us in order to review it, that's called, it passes completeness, it's available and to be viewed by anyone that has access to the internet. The minute that happens, a notice automatically goes to anyone who is an LGD. So in this case, there's Dick Anderwald and Diana May in this county who have that, who get that notification. There's an automatic 20-day public comment period that's associated with that. And citizens don't get individual notices. That's where, as Dick said, you know, it's the LGD's responsibility to contact the people that he feels are concerned about that. That 20-day period can be extended by an initial 10-day period with, just with a simple email to me or to someone in the permit group, the permitter that's responsible for that. So it's 30 days comment period for you all.
So, so just because a permit is deemed complete, that doesn't necessarily mean that the application's approved or you're going forward in any way. All it means is that you have enough to start the process for permitting.
That's it. That's exactly it. And there are two pieces to the permit application these days. One of them is, we call the Form 2, which is the actual application for permit to drill the well. The other one is the 2A, which is the surface location assessment, and that's when a lot of the citizens' concerns are addressed. That's where a lot of the negotiations that Dick was referring to on the two Banning Lewis properties occurred. That's where those comments are housed.
And, and just so I can understand the process, is there any requirement, once the state finishes the complete permitting, for them to then file their permits with the city? What is the, is there any kind of requirement on when they need to? Can they go through the whole state process, get approval before coming to us and saying we want to, to drill within the city? Or do they have to file with us concurrently?
As long as you have someone who is on record as being a local government designee, you will automatically get notification of when the permit process starts.
But when do they have to do the permit with us? When do they have to come and say, we want to drill in Colorado Springs, and then it gets forwarded to, to the Planning Commission or to other authorization?
Dick, I think that, yeah, Dick can clarify that piece of it.
Well, i-if you look at the, let's go, let's go to the code draft, direct your attention to, again, page four, the pre-application paragraph header. Before submitting an application to the city, any person applying for an oil and gas permit shall request a meeting, preferably prior to submitting the state applications. Now, again, we talked a little bit about preferably because we didn't feel that we could force that issue, but it becomes an issue of timing. Typically, we, we, we would like to conduct a concurrent process, even, even further than that, engage early before they actually submit state applications so that our concerns are embedded in those state applications. It would not be to the operator's advantage to go get a state permit first and then come back and have to go through a local process that could result in negotiations that might cause an amendment to the state application through an agreed-upon condition of approval, for example. So I, I think the indication that we've had, and we, Diana May, my counterpart at, at the county, sponsors bimonthly local government designee meetings in which members of the industry, both Ultra and Hillcorp have attended those meetings, the state has been there, a water purveyor has been attending those meetings. The purpose is to bring everybody to the table and talk through the local issues that are out there, and we've gotten an indication from both Ultra and Hillcorp that they would find it very beneficial to engage in pre-application discussions so that they don't end up having to duplicate the process.
Robert?
At our informal meeting, I brought up the question of, of the definition of a building unit, which was a portion of, a portion of the way you determined whether there would be additional review by this, by this board.
Correct.
And I asked for the definition which, which you were able to provide. And my concern is that the definition of a building unit includes commercial space and also warehouse space, potentially even storage units, things like that. And I think that the most important thing we probably want to look at is units that have residential occupation, especially in the evening and/or, or 24-hour occupation, as opposed to an office building or a commercial building or a warehouse. Did you do anything to integrate any of those concerns into these regulations, or is that just open right now?
No, that's still an open issue. I, I heard your concern, I provided you the information you requested, but I think that's a matter that Planning Commission should debate. I think Chris Melcher commented during the last study session that the definition that was provided, the state definition, really considers where people congregate, regardless of whether it's 24-hour or not, is, is not considered in that state definition, but where you have large groups of people, whether it's an office, workspace, or a congregate care facility, outdoor recreation, all those are aspects that are considered when you look at, at high concentrations of folks. So from a purely professional staff perspective, I would, and I would encourage you to consider keeping it the way it's written, but that's certainly the prerogative of the commission to consider alternatives.
Well, my thought process was that, especially during the drilling process, that you have a 24-hour operation, and that a person that's working in an office building isn't affected in the same way that somebody that's trying to sleep or, or whatever would have a different set of concerns. And that was, that was the reason why I thought it would, we, we might want to consider having some kind of a distinction there.
There's also a vibration, that it's, if you're thinking you're in an office building and you hear somebody working on another floor, you may experience some disruption like that as well, so.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderwald?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Please? Nancy, we will ask you to officially sign in at some point.
I will, thank you. I really want to applaud the City of Colorado Springs for participating in this process. I think that we've all been really encouraged with the efforts from the local citizen committee, as well as from the staff. And I think what you all have put together is very important, especially the willingness to participate in the LGD program. I think that's really very important. And as we've worked with the staff, we think that the statement that this avoids operational conflict is true. You know, we think that this appears to be something that we can work together well on, so I'd like to support this. And I also wanted to address the questions, a couple of the questions. I was actually at the presentation yesterday when Governor Hickenlooper was speaking, and I'm not sure exactly what, where he was going with the comment about the increased well-integrity situation. I didn't hear the word sonar in the presentation, so I don't know where that came into play. And I'm not an engineer, so I don't understand all of the pieces of that. I do know that the stakeholder group looking at setbacks has been ongoing for several months, and that they're getting close to being able to make their recommendations. And so that's something that is, you know, has been ongoing and is getting closer to resolution. One of the other questions had to do with the groundwater monitoring, and that right now is a voluntary program through the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, and there are a lot of the operators that are participating in that. And that's one thing that I've seen put as a condition of approval on a pending permit. And I don't remember the fourth bullet point. Oh, emissions. And emissions is not officially part of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission task. That's officially part of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and they are working on new sets of regulations that will help encourage operators to do more with the emissions control at the wellhead. And I do know that, I heard a presentation on this just the other day at the COGA conference where Gunnison County is helping support a, a study with a few local operators on trying to understand exactly what those emissions are and how local weather conditions impact their movement. So that's something that is being, you know, a big concern to a lot of people, so I hope that helps.
Thank you. Mike has a question for you?
Just real quick while you're playing.
Sure.
What's the status of the intergovernmental agreement between the COGCC and El Paso County with regard to the water testing?
I understand that it's close, but I don't know the current status. We have a brand-new governor as of, Governor Director as of Monday, and so I think they were waiting for the new Director of the Oil and Gas Commission to kind of help give guidance on finalizing that, so.
So then would it be up to a committee here, then, to do the same thing for the city? Would it be our, our LGD to do that? Who would, and would they contact you to do it?
Well, because the IGA is a, is a legal document, it's usually worked between the sets of attorneys, but definitely if the LGD wanted to contact me to get the process rolling, that's one way of doing it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ken Onestone. I'm an attorney with Beatty Wozniak and representing Ultra. With me today in the audience is Mary Sharon Balikas, Ultra's land manager, who was one of the participants in the teleconference that Mr. Anderwald spoke about for conditions of approval. And in general, we think you've come up with a very workable approach, the tiered analysis makes sense to me, of having you having a closer look at those facilities that are in proximity to residential structures and other buildings. The idea that Mr. Anderwald described of the multi-pronged approach, where you use all the tools that are available to you, and as Mr. Anderwald has indicated, you've had a good experience to date with the LGD consultation process. We think that's a very appropriate way to go for local governments, particularly as development is just starting in an area. Obviously, Well County and Greeley, other cities like that, have much more experience and many more wells. I think at the last count, the City of Greeley has something on the order of 430 wells inside the city limits. So this is a kind of go-slow approach, see how the existing tools work, and there could always be mid-course corrections, but this is a great start. I think, as Mr. Anderwald indicated, the pre-application meeting would be a very key part of this process. Commissioner Mark Wischew asked about the timing of that. I would recommend to my clients that they sit down and have that pre-application meeting before submitting their, their permit materials to the state, because there may well be some issues on citing or so forth that come up. So there's no reason to get all that material into the state and have to go back and redo it. So I think the earlier, the better for these types of processes. So I've been doing this for about 30 years. I've permitted several hundred wells in everywhere from Boulder County, open space, to inside the City of Greeley. I was a member of the governor's task force on collaborative regulation between local governments and the state, and I'm currently serving and participating on the setback task force. Also have a fair degree of knowledge about water quality, air emission issues, so with that just general indication of support, I would offer, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help address some of those.
Yeah, I have a direct question. What are the results of your test wells?
Of Ultra's test wells? I'm their outside counsel, Commissioner, so I don't have.
Oh, no, come on, you got inside track.
Well, actually, I think my understanding is that they haven't finished the full completion activities in those wells. I, I believe they have taken some substantial core material from those wells, and it's under analysis now.
Any idea?
So it's still early in the game.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand that. Any idea of timetable, when that'll become available?
Well, I had lunch with Mary Sharon. She says the labs are rather backed up. There's a lot of activity in the Niobrere here, so it's probably some months away.
Okay.
And I will tell you, my other client down here is Hillcorp, and they'll be drilling later this fall too, so we'll get some other activities that you can take a look at.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Yeah. Yeah, would you like that? Yes. Kathleen, would you like to speak on the issue of traffic? And assurances, financial assurances for road damage?
Kathleen Crager, Transportation Manager for the City Public Works, Colorado Springs. There are really two traffic issues that we'll be looking at for impacts with oil and gas. One is a basic roadway capacity, and we will treat that issue the same as we do with any other type of development. We'll be looking at their trip generation and the roads that they plan on using and determining if there's any need for construction such as turn lanes or additional lanes to guarantee the level of service that we expect on our roadway system. What is different about oil and gas wells than what we would normally consider in a traffic impact study is looking at road degradation. As Dick spoke about, with oil and gas, you're talking about heavy truck usage, and some of those heavy trucks can be very damaging to roads. This can also be in an area where you don't really have roads that are well-built. We might be talking about gravel roadways or very simple overlay roadways and want to look at the damage of those. Under normal traffic engineering rules, we project what the impact is going to be and have the developer correct the situation upfront. That's very difficult to do when you're talking about roadway degradation, because you would have to be able to visibly see what's under the roadway and every inch of that roadway to know how it's going to react to the damaging weight of the trucks. And we simply don't know that much of the background of what that base course and underlying condition on the roadways are. So because of that, it's very difficult to say, yes, this roadway is going to degrade a certain amount and you need to add eight inches of asphalt. So the way that, the, I think the more appropriate way to deal with degradation and the way that I would plan on dealing with it here in the city is that you determine the routes that will be used by truck traffic for a specific facility and then do an analysis of the road conditions along that route. And both the city and the oil and gas company agree that, yes, these are the current conditions. And then those conditions are checked on a regular basis, and when the conditions deteriorate beyond what we would classify as just the normal wear and tear of our roadway system, then it becomes up to the oil and gas company to repair the roads and bring them up, back up to the regular condition. This is what most communities in Colorado have done for roadway degradation. I have worked on roadway degradation for things other than oil and gas, for example, for gravel pit operations, and it seems to, that seems to function the best. You are taking that risk of not being able to predict where there's a problem and instead addressing the problem as it occurs. That also seems to be a manner in which the oil and gas companies are willing to participate, that, you know, they'll, they will work with you and say, yes, we agree to the, the conditions now and we're going to maintain those conditions at time in the future. It usually means that what you end up with after the well has stopped being used, that you do a final overlay of the roads and they go back to the condition that they were originally. You also often have the fixing of potholes and overlays in between to make sure that the roads are still being kept up at adequate situation. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions on that.
Just a real quick question. I understand how difficult that must be to determine, but what if you have five or six different operators running over common roads? How do you then determine who pays what and, and when that happens?
Well, if that happens, first of all, we're going to have to enter into an agreement and it may be the same oil company, for example.
Could be.
That is doing it, but if it's different companies, they're going to have to come together and, and form that joint agreement with the city. And we're going to be basing it on their number of trucks that they're using and the weight of their trucks so that we can determine who needs to be responsible for it, for, you know, what portion of the roadway improvements that are necessary.
And would you make, did the city make that determination? I mean, what, how would that read as far as who makes the determination that it needs to be fixed?
Yeah, I'm feeling pretty honored because this is the one situation, it seems, that the city gets to make the decisions rather than someone at the state level. And just as we would for any other development, we will be looking at the impacts and it is up to the city to say, these are your impacts and you need to fix it. Now, when I say I've got that power and authority and I'm feeling pretty good, I also realize that legally I have to make sure that I'm on firm ground and that there is a nexus to what it is that I want either fixed or repaired or improved and what the company has done to cause that damage. I, I can't go out and ask an oil and gas company to build me, you know, let's, let's repave I-25 when they're not having any trucks on I-25. Yeah, you know, so in the same way that we always deal with that nexus when we're looking at development issues, that will apply for oil and gas as well.
So you are, oh, I'm sorry. So you are establishing an assurance based on this, this estimate, if you will, just like you do the poor developers?
That, that's right. There will have to be financial assurances and they will have to enter into an agreement to fulfill degradation mitigation on an ongoing basis.
And, and then you, so you will hold that with a, hopefully a reasonable release provision in the event that they don't perform?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner McGill. Now just look like you mean it, okay?
Commissioner Henninger, you have a question?
When you're looking at the analysis as far as the impact on the road, right now a lot of the consideration is for putting in the well, doing all the preliminary work, removing the rig, what is your analysis also including anything as far as long-term? And I'm not sure what the long-term activity would be, because I'm presuming that most, if a well starts to produce, most of it to me would be piped versus trucked, but I mean, there, there's an impact there that if it's an isolated well and they're not going to run a line to it and they're just going to run trucks, is that also in your analysis or is it just?
Yes, they're going to have to let me know what the initial truck generation is or trip generation and weights and the ongoing is. And if the answer is, we don't know what the ongoing is until we know what the production availability of that oil, of that well is, that's sort of okay, but what it means is you only get permission to go to this point and then we're going to have to go back and look at it again and set up a new agreement once you determine at what level you're going to be producing out of that well.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I think you may have answered this, but let's say that you drill the well, it's successful, and you have a program that's in place for two or three or five, five years or 10 years, and then something happens and they go back in and they refrack the well or do something else, and all of a sudden you've got a whole bunch more production and a whole bunch more traffic. Do you have the ability at that point in time to go in and renegotiate the?
Certainly. Just as a traffic study for, say, a retail development only assumes that they'll turn in trip generation table for 40,000 square feet of retail. And they luck out and they get the, the motherload of, of retail leases and an 80,000-square-foot user comes in and says, I want to add to this. That requires a brand-new traffic impact study at that point. Same way, there will be a traffic analysis for a given number of truck trips, and if something happens that that's going to increase, then we're going to have to relook at the situation.
Commissioner Gonzalez brought up an interesting point at our informal meeting last week. He, the draft states that a traffic impact study must be prepared. He was asking whether or not that study should be required to be an independent versus maybe somebody in-house at the, at the operator level doing that traffic study. Do you have an opinion on whether or not if it's done in-house as a traffic study according to our guidelines versus having an independent study done?
The, the way it is written in our subdivision manual is that the traffic impact study has to be done by a professional engineer who specializes in traffic. It has to be a licensed engineer in the state of Colorado. For me ethically, I'm okay if that licensed engineer is either working for, directly for the oil and gas company or he's serving as a consultant to the oil and gas company because his professional license requires that his first and foremost client is the traveling public of the state of Colorado and not the person that's paying the bill. Let's say he has a little bit of difficulty with that, that rule, and he gets a little fuzzy at times and his salary is good. That's still okay because his traffic study then gets reviewed by professional traffic engineers who are not financially tied at all to the applicant. So I feel confident that we have a system that can review things honestly and make good decisions.
Any other questions for Ms. Crager? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, I, I think that this kind of rolls in such a way as, Winetta, do you have anything you would like to say on behalf of the city attorney's office? Okay. Is there anyone else in the city who would like to speak on this issue? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of the ordinance? Okay, now we'll move to those who wish to speak in opposition to the ordinance. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
I'm not necessarily in complete, I was. No, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you would want to hear this.
But we may. We want to hear it, definitely, but we hope it's on point. That would be helpful too.
Well, my name is Sandra Perridge, and I've lived in Colorado Springs for 24 years. I just, I guess I would just want to start out on page eight, under the heading Review Criteria, and then go to page nine, letter I, this will be the very last one. It states, "The use will not be otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of present or future residents of the city." And, I mean, having drilling operations in Colorado Springs, this will definitely have a very negative impact on public health and public safety and, and welfare. And, I mean, there are so many reasons why I say this. I guess just recently, the University of Colorado did a three-year study. This was in Battlement Mesa in Garfield County in Colorado, and the results of the study were, showed that the air quality within a half-mile of, of drilling operations which were using hydraulic fracturing, the air quality was five times more polluted, more toxic, above the federal EPA air quality standards for, for what is okay to breathe. So anyone living or working within that half-mile radius is breathing very toxic air, and I mean, this is, this probably will happen here. There's no reason why it wouldn't. I don't believe the state is doing a good job at all regulating, regulating toxic emissions or, or even for that matter, regulating, preventing our water from being contaminated because it's happening all over the state. People that get their water from aquifers or wells are having their, their tap water contaminated. It's absolutely, it's happening. So, I mean, this very well could happen here. I don't know what, how bad the risk is for surplus water, which I guess that's, that's what most of us get from Colorado Springs, which means utility surplus water. I don't know how, how bad the risk is for, for our tap water being contaminated, but I think that there would be. I think there still is a risk even for that.
I'll tell you what, we really appreciate your coming, and we want you to know that there's a fair amount of sympathy and support for that position here.
Okay.
On this planning commission.
Right.
We've heard it before.
Okay.
And there is support, and we do understand the issue. The problem that we are facing is the issue of operational conflict.
I, yeah.
And our city attorneys have made it quite clear to us that this is the purview of the COGCC.
I know.
Okay.
And I, and I just, I just, just so that you know, I just feel it's absolutely wrong that, that the state is forcing us, that they are forcing us to have this here. I know. I think, I think it's a violation of the citizens' rights because we have a right to a clean, decent environment. We have a right to not be fearful that our water is going to be contaminated. We have a right to breathe clean air. And, and I, and I really, you know, I know there's nothing that you can do about it, you know, but, but I just.
Well, I think there are things we can do about it, and we certainly understand what you're, what you're trying to tell us, and we share those same concerns. We breathe the same air that you do. But the courts have said this is the responsibility of the state.
Right. I, I understand that.
And so. Yeah. Do you have anything that you could, any input for us in terms of the application process or anything like that that you'd like us to know about? Things that we can actually do something about?
In terms of, in terms of, of the, of Ultra Petroleum, in terms of their application, is that what you mean?
Yeah, in terms of the application process that we get to influence here on the Planning Commission. We're going to make a recommendation to city council on certain things that the local municipalities have the opportunity to influence. The application process and the permitting process are the two things that we can influence. Do you have any thoughts on that that you'd like us to know?
You know, I, I, I guess, I guess the answer is no. I, I, you know, all of my fear and my concern is all, it's around the drilling, it's around the things that local government is not really allowed to.
Decide, yeah. We understand.
You know, but, but I, you know, again, I, I, the, the state is not doing a good job, you know, they're, they're not doing a good job regulating and, and people are suffering. People are, as I said, having their water contaminated, they're breathing toxic air, and I, and it just, it breaks my heart just to know that this is going to happen in Colorado Springs. It's wrong.
I think there's some exciting news here. If you read the in-reposed article, you'll find that the governor has listened, and he has a four-point program here where he is saying to the citizens who are concerned about air quality and water quality that he is hearing you and that additional work needs to be done by COGCC to increase the comfort level of the citizens of this state with, with oil and drilling.
I, I, I would like to read the article. Is, is there a way that I can?
Yeah, you can have my copy of it, it's right here.
I can have you.
So I think there's hope. Okay, so is there anything else that we can help you with?
No, just, you know, what, what I have left is, is just, well, there was, there was a study done by the federal EPA, let's see, between, between 1996 and 2002, and I, it's just, I have all of the results and it's, you know.
Once again, I think that, that is great information for the COGCC.
Okay.
So would you mind signing in?
Yeah, I will, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming down. I know you've been very patient waiting for all this to take place. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Please.
I am here, and I believe everybody noticed some beautiful young children sitting in the back of the room earlier today.
Would you mind telling us your name, please?
The children's mother, Amanda Harrison, has asked me to convey deep, deep concerns of women, men, and mothers and fathers all over the city. And that concern is that there is permanent water damage done. And that concern is that there is permanent water damage done with no change, no remediation whatsoever available. Once it's gone, it's gone. And it's well-established, as you just mentioned, that this is an extreme health hazard that we are allowing. The children, in this case, that were in the back of the room is young Jeremy, aged seven, Anna Jacob, Anna's the girl, Jacob's the boy, they're twins, aged four. They live in one of the areas that was discussed earlier. And that is over in the eastern part of Colorado Springs and Semeron Hills area. And many folks in this town are extremely concerned, as is Amanda and her family. I was night before last in Denver, where people gathered from all over the state, many of them in exactly the same position. And right now, what is being asked over and over again is why the populace in the state of Colorado is not allowed to vote a yea or nay. And if you're all ready for a chuckle, I will tell you what many of the younger people who were present have renamed our governor. Are you ready for a little laugh? Hick and Looper the Pooper. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Please come forward. Would you mind signing in, please? Arita, if you'd...
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Talbot. I've been a resident of Colorado Springs, except for one year since 1995. I am retired from El Paso County Department of Public Health, and I was an alternate on the Oil and Gas Committee. That means that I was able certainly to attend the meetings, and did attend 10 of the 13 meetings, and did accompany the group up to Greeley. But I was not routinely able to add things at the meeting. I have a number of comments, some specifically regarding the slides. On the slide saying municipalities may not totally prohibit oil and gas drilling. That is indeed true, as we've learned. And Long, the city of Longmont is indeed being sued for prohibiting oil and gas operations in residential zones. That, however, does not mean it's settled law. La Plata County was sued, and indeed, La Plata County prevailed in court and were able to exercise reasonable rules to protect the health and safety of their citizens. I would suggest you visit or talk to Josh Joshwick, who was one of the county commissioners at the time. Secondly, as we look at the map that has been provided, it's very clear that there is going to be a disparate impact of this operation on the eastern side of the city. There is no way around it. Some of the most affluent parts of town will be well-protected, and a lot of citizens ask the question, do we not deserve the same protections? As to the ordinance as it stands, page seven, review. I have to confess that I was very impressed this morning, as the commissioners, all of you, listened to the concerns of the citizens. You presented, you asked thoughtful questions, you asked probing questions, and you attempted to balance compatibility with the neighborhoods. What concerns me a bit more is that I intended at least part of your last informal meeting. I heard great concern that we not get sued. The mission of this commission is to improve the quality of life, not to prevent lawsuits. Let the lawyers duke it out. Your job is to protect the people, the city, and all of its residents and its environment. So I heard that over and over again. Are we going to not be sued? Jake, is this a good enough rule that we won't be sued? Are we being protective enough? Are we being, making it easy enough for the drillers to get their permits? Ladies and gentlemen, that's absurd. There was not a question about, are we protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the people who live here? So I would respectfully request that instead of having review by this panel, we have review of all permits by the city council. Because if the citizens are unhappy with the city council, they can vote them out of office. The citizens have no say in your appointments and no input. It would appear that there is an apparent disregard for the health, safety, and welfare of the people. Second, residential drilling. Longmont, as I said, is being sued. It doesn't mean that's settled law. This morning, you were concerned that 150-foot building, excuse me, was incompatible with residential neighborhoods. Now, think about that. A well pad with potentially eight wellheads might also be incompatible with, with residential places, where we live, where our children go to school, where we go to church and recreate. That is slightly incompatible. And I ask you to consider that. There are plenty of other places to drill. There are plenty of other ways to figure this out without carte blanche, saying you can drill in any residential area. Third, while I find many, Howard Burgoyne, who is a Hogan Lovell's attorney, and they do represent oil and gas concerns very often, made a comment in the meeting. He said, "You don't make rules for the best drillers. You make rules for the worst." Now, think about that. We have some darn good conditions of approval, thank you to our LGD, but those are with the approval of the COGCC. Let's, and I will pick out air quality. We are, our, our conditions of approval, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Dick, require emission controls on all wells. In the regulations, you can emit up to 20 tons of volatile organic compounds, BTECs, things like that, per pad, before you have to install emission controls. That's true, except for three counties who got that reduced to five tons annually. But you remember, you're at the mercy, if the COGCC regime changes and they decide that's not, we don't care about emission controls, that's gone. It is their right to tell us. We need to be able to protect the people of this city and this county. So what I'm saying to you is, if you're okay with open waste pits, if you're okay with road spreading of produced water without testing, if you're okay with emissions from pads of up to 20 tons, that's what you're saying. I support the COGCC regs and the, and the CDPH air quality regs. There are some real problems. What else is missed? So what I suggest you do is, I suggest that you go back and you put a big chart, because I'm assuming every one of you have read all these regs, correct? And all the air quality regs, and analyze them. You make a big chart, and I suggest you ask our LGD to do this, and say, okay, what's governing air quality? Right now, the best bet in town is the fact that we have a condition of approval. There's nothing to guarantee that two, three, or four years from now, we're going to get that same condition of approval. I wouldn't want to suck up 20 tons of BTECs every year, and I doubt any of you would either. The point is, we have to know very specifically. In this handout, we reference local ordinances, noise and whatnot. Let's see it. If you have, you have to have confidence that we're really protected. And until you have 100% of that confidence, I ask you not to, not to send these forward to the city council. That you can say, okay, noise, I want to know, because maybe it is, the neighborhood you protect might be your own. It may be the Broadmoor. I can't imagine those folks wanting to smell toluene wafting off a pond. The point is, you have to be convinced, we, the citizens, have to be convinced, line by line, that everything is in order, that we are protected. And finally, all due respects, Madam Chair, your husband is the Attorney General. It is his office that is in fact suing people for trying to protect their residents. I respectfully ask you to recuse yourself from any decision. Thank you.
I respectfully decline your request. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Talbot?
I'd like to make a statement, just a response. I respectfully disagree that we don't care. If you were here this morning, we care. And you hit the nail on the head. We are acting as an advisory commission for the city council. The city council is the one that makes the decision on this ordinance. We do not make a decision. And we've reviewed, we've spent more time analyzing and going through what we can and can't do, number one, what is advised by each of our individual research to pass on to city council. Then it's up to them. So before you pull out your gun and start shooting people, you have to look at a little broader picture. And I, and I understand the process probably as well as you do in the drilling process. I've been involved. And it's not a simple one. It's not easy. And, you know, where it goes with city council, I don't know. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, are there any other persons who wish to speak in opposition to the request, to the ordinance? Please come forward.
My name is Lorena Townsend. I'm a resident of Colorado Springs, a Colorado native, and I wanted to share a petition that I started on change.org, asking all of you to please put stringent regulations on this industry in town. I know that Longmont's being sued, we've all discussed this, but it is important for you guys to protect the citizens. That's your job, and was apparent today that you did that with the, the agenda item that was right before us. I was really impressed with how you guys voted and the concerns that you brought up. And Mary pretty much outlined everything that I was going to say, so I'll hand this off, I guess. There's 378 signatures on there. This is totally grassroots, it's just me, online. So this isn't me standing in front of the library or any of that stuff. I come to you as a mother, very concerned about this. So I hope that you guys really look at also who's giving you information and what their motivations are. I didn't want to spend my day off here all day, but I did, because it's important to me. I didn't do it because I'm getting paid by any green groups or any alternative energy companies. I'm standing here as a citizen of this town, a very proud citizen of this town. And I think this could be very, very dangerous, and I just request, as the petition says, to please do your best to protect my son. Thank you.
Ms. Townsend, I want to thank you for giving us your time today, because I know it's very valuable to you. Is there anyone who has any questions or for Ms. Townsend? Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the ordinance?
I have something to put on the projector. My name is Eric Verlo, and I appreciate the chance to address you today. I admit that I'm, I'm kind of hazy on, on your role in this, so I didn't have some specific recommendations relative to these guidelines. I appreciate those who got up here with, you know, and, and were on the hot seat about how to make their comments specific to your function. But I think, for starters, the whole idea, if, if you're advising this, the city, the whole idea of, of being constrained by operational conflicts, I think that's something you could say, no, no, no. We, we want to be in, in, if, if it's a matter of protecting the, the community, then, and we have to be in operational conflict, then we're going to be. And I think the idea that the state is, wants to sue the city, or is suing Longmont, let's say, or threatening to sue, that's really suspect. Why would they do that? And, and perhaps you know the business reasons why, but it, as a govern, governing body, that's, that's a preposterous notion. And I'd like, if, if, if we're thinking about legalities, I'd like you to recommend to the city that we sue the state. Let's sue the state. And let's possibly approach the Attorney General and say, let's, let's figure out if we can't charge these people, the, the, the drilling companies and the state regulators with attempted murder. Let's, let's charge them with a crime. We're talking about poison. I've brought this illustration, it's a, it's a very nice little graphic to show everyone what fracking is, and, and, you know, the idea that you're creating fissures within the, within the earth, and, in, in, in the process, of course, is to gather gas and oil, but it's also creating the, the ways that the poisonous chemicals used in the fracking process actually can reach the water and can reach aquifers. So it's kind of a nice illustration in this case. It's a, it's not a half glass, a glass half-full or half-empty, it's full, and in this case, it's full of poison. And so, so there's a, there's actually a very tidy way around this problem, and nations like Germany and France have, have, have just decided they're going to ban fracking. They're going to outlaw it. Then they don't have to do all these discussions about, about roadways or about air quality. They don't have to. They, they've figured out, this is poisoning the environment, we're not going to allow it. Now, that's perhaps not your purview, but, but if you're, if you're advising the council, maybe you can just throw it back to the council and say, nope, nope, doesn't work, doesn't work. And, and I was kind of, even though I was wearing this protective clothing, I still got sickened today, this, this, this reminds me, you know, seeing representative, representative of the industry, reminds me of, of the, of what, the way the tobacco industry used to operate. You know, for years and decades and decades, they told us, no, nicotine's not addictive. Oh, no, cigarettes aren't harmful. You know, we, people knew, people knew that cigarettes were addictive, you know, in the early part of the 20th century. But, but people, these people, for, for the want of a buck, they're willing to just lie. And I, I guess I don't, I don't see why, you know, as intelligent human beings, why we're even tolerating that anymore? Why do we, why do we have to even be civil about this? I mean, I, one of the attractive things for me about Colorado Springs, it's, it's the West, and I really yearn for the Wild West. When, when, you know, when citizens were outraged and, and, and city administrators were outraged, we used to run people out on a rail. You know, somebody who dared to come in and tried to, to give a shifty, shifty advice and, and, and would try to poison a population, we'd put them on a tarrifrazum, run them out on a rail. That's what I'd like to see some of these oil people up, know that they're up against. They're up against wise citizens and wise government administrators, just saying, no, we're not buying your bull, and we're not going to be forced by a government that's been co-opted by your industry, and we're just not going to do it. So I'm hoping if, if that's something that you can take to, to the council and say, and say, no, we'd rather, we'd rather see our citizens protected, try again. That's, that's, that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the ordinance? We've already spoken, I'm sorry, you've had your turn. Is that all right, Mark, or not?
It's within your discretion, but it's going to open up the opportunity for other people to come, speak again.
If it's, if, if someone would like to ask you a direct question, that's fine, otherwise I'm not going to open it up. You've had your opportunity, okay? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Okay, then I think we are finished with that portion, and we are opening it up to discussion on the part of the commission.
First off, I've known Janet Southers for seven years now, been on the board now for over a year. over a year. And my perception and knowledge, factual, is that she has the highest integrity and will operate in the best interests of the citizens of this community and personally resent having her integrity impugned.
Dick, could I ask you a couple of questions? We had a lot of additional information to go through on this one. And there was an email that came in from John Maynard that brought up four different issues that he wanted to, he thought that we should be aware of. And I think everybody got a copy of this, correct? I have two questions on a couple of the issues that he brought up. One was, he said, the code is silent, unless I missed something, on injection wells. Can you go into a little bit more detail? I don't know what an injection well is and what he might have been referring to, that I think he went on to say that he believes that he would like to see them not permitted anywhere in the city. Can you expand on that a little bit and enlighten?
Yes. Injection wells are where oil companies or drillers dispose of used fracking fluids or other production chemicals. Generally, our understanding from presentations to the Oil and Gas Committee is that those fluids are generally reused multiple times before they're ultimately determined to be spent and disposed of. Presently, they're hauled quite some distance. There are no injection wells that I'm aware of in El Paso County. And they are to locations that are approved and, again, I probably need to ask our state person to come up and clarify this. But our code does not reference injection. Anything not referenced is not permitted. So there is no need to specifically prohibit it, injection wells. We just did not make provisions for them.
Is this more of an operational issue anyway, as far as the state is concerned? Does this fall into that, that issue of conflicting with operational objectives?
I think, primarily, I think the answer to that question is yes. It falls under state purview and an entirely different set of regulations, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. The other question I've got for you is, he brings up a question about, it appears to me that the code adequately addresses existing uses but is silent on planned and zoned uses. Could you kind of talk a little bit about that and explain to me where he might be coming from on that?
This was, as I believe, and I don't know that you have copies of John's and my exchange of comments in red and green text. Do you have comments where I've actually responded?
No, I don't. I just have, I just have one where it was forwarded to me. I must have missed that one.
I was not aware that, I thought we, he and I were talking, so I didn't think to actually send the correspondence on to the Planning Commission. His concern was that the setbacks from, it's a question of whether you're requiring setbacks from structures to an established well versus locating wells a given distance from existing structures. This code deals with setbacks from existing structures, much as we talked about the variety of different, the different kinds within the high-density areas, as opposed to setting standards for the setbacks of new construction from existing wells. The City of Aurora just went through amendments to their code because now that they have developed wells, they have developers who want to build close to those wells but don't want to have to meet a 350-foot setback. So they don't want the standard reversed and applied to them as it would be applied if you were drilling a new well next to existing homes. And their argument was that we want the market to determine what level of acceptable proximity there is to an existing operating wellhead. And if there is no market, we won't build the houses. Basically, that was the premise, that the request for the 150-foot setback was presented by the HBA in Aurora. And as I understand it, the most recently, most recent set of amendments to the Aurora Code provide for a 150-foot setback from existing wellheads to new residential development. This code does not deal with that.
And I'm sorry, if I might jump in. This code contemplates utilizing COGCC setbacks as they're defined in the current version of their rules. There actually are some rules related to encroachment from development, and it sounds very similar to what Aurora just did. So that's basically what we're going to be doing if this code is adopted. So we will allow closer development than the 350 feet under COGCC rules. If it's compatible, under the review criteria, of course.
That sounds like something that would more than likely come before Planning Commission. Is that correct? If somebody were to want to develop within 150 feet of a wellhead?
Under this criteria, anything within 1,000 feet would come to the Planning Commission.
Regardless of whether...
If it's a building unit.
Yeah.
But if it's a new, if it's a new development application for a housing development that's going to involve subdivision activity, it will come to the Planning Commission.
Okay. What I'm concerned about is making sure that if that does happen, that there's opportunity for public input. Okay, thank you.
I have questions regarding the water sampling rules. In your presentation, your PowerPoint that you did this morning, you mentioned that, you mentioned water sampling rules, and then, under code provisions, it's not addressed and the city should enter into an IGA with the state. There are no, just to make sure I'm clear, in the draft that we're going to be, that we've been presented, there are no rules related to water sampling. And you're suggesting that we do this as a separate intergovernmental agreement with the state?
Similar to what El Paso County is currently doing, yes.
And at what point are we going to be acting on that? Because I would certainly like to see water basis measurements and monitoring on a frequent basis and our ability to enforce that.
Well, we did, the current conditions for the two Ultra permits that were granted by the state. Now, understand that the county, or the city commented on the issuance of the two Ultra permits by the state. We also advised Ultra via letter that the state approval of their operation, two well sites, does not constitute approval by the city pending the outcome of these new regulations and their application to the two well sites. However, in the process of exercising the role as local government designee, we negotiated those operating conditions which parallel the voluntary water quality program requirements that were instituted or established by the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. So your concerns, as you speak to them now, are already on the two Ultra permits as conditions of approval.
But why wouldn't the compliance with those voluntary rules be part of our review criteria in this draft? Why is it being held separate?
Because the courts have ruled, and this is not an undecided issue, on terms of water quality, that the, it would be viewed, the city's rules would be preempted if they are more stringent than the state's as pertained to water quality testing. The state realizes, and COGA, as the association, the industry association realizes, that there's an issue with water quality testing at this point in time. That's why they voluntarily established a set of guidelines to avoid, and this is my take, to avoid additional state regulations being developed. And 90, roughly 98% of their membership subscribes to, and they have a list on their website of their members who have adopted the voluntary requirements. So when we worked with Ultra, CDPHE, COGCC, in our teleconference call, we asked for those standards to be employed. They were agreed to by Ultra and attached to their state permits as conditions of approval. So we've accomplished that objective. The next time it comes up with new applications, we would hope to have in place a formal IGA with the state so that it's not necessary for us to raise that issue every time around. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, I mean, do you, when do you anticipate the city entering into the IGA with the state so that we can say, okay, we've got our review criteria, but we also have the IGA to make sure that it will be, the water quality sampling will be done on a regular basis? When do you anticipate that?
Well, I would expect as soon as council indicates their preference for whatever version of code that they intend to adopt, that the mayor would provide the direction to immediately begin negotiations with the state. I mean, there is the alternative, that council could say, as Ms. Talbot has requested, that we spell all those standards out in our local code and not worry about operational conflict. If council takes that position, then we don't need an IGA with the state. So we want to be certain that we have a clear course of action, having been set by council, before we ask the mayor to direct negotiations with the state. And as that was mentioned earlier, that would primarily occur between the attorney staffs of both entities.
This might be a question for Dick or possibly Mark. Let's say that these regulations are, in fact, passed forward and the city council adopts them, whatever the regulations are. Would the existing permits for Ultra be grandfathered in as they were written? Or would they then be subject to these rules? And the second part of the question is, I think I know the answer to the first, is if they were then to redo their permit because of increased production or some other reason, would then, they would then be subject to the new rules at that point? Is that about right?
That's correct. The state permit, we've put Ultra on notice that the state permits do not authorize drilling within the city limits without their having obtained city approvals. So half of the effort is completed. We would require compliance. As soon as the new code becomes effective, we would request Ultra come in, have a pre-application meeting, go through the process. We would review those applications as they would be otherwise reviewed concurrently. We would, and then we would apply or ask them to incorporate within their application or revise their state application for any circumstances that might come to light under our review. However, we conducted a pretty thorough review of these and achieved our objectives through the LGD process. So I would expect that this, these two applications would essentially be reviewed using the new process, but the outcome would remain unchanged.
But then if it was a, if they redid it for some reason after they drilled, then clearly they'd have to come...
Anytime there is a, now, the ordinance provides for onsite adjustments and alterations, the twinning and the side tracking and other references there that allow minor adjustments within the site. But these, the wells that have been permitted are vertical wells. There are applications currently in the county for horizontal extensions of those vertical wells already permitted in the county. So in order to go horizontal, then Ultra would be filing new applications at their existing locations that would in turn be reviewed, referred to the city for review that we would conduct concurrently with the state review.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Andewalt? Okay, we are at the table. Does anyone have any comments they would like to make? Mike?
I would, I, I can, I agree with everybody out there talking that we shouldn't have to be regulated. We should be able to regulate as a local municipality and not have to listen to what the state says. I always thought that, you know, the feds could hand down their regulations and then the state could meet or exceed those regulations, and then the local municipality could do the same. But it seems like we're going backwards here, and the state's just stepped in and says, you're going to do this. But we're dealing right now with land use issues as a planning commission. And so a lot of the stuff that's come up and a lot of stuff that we've heard, I mean, with water rights, you would think that we could set our own standards, but we can't. Until we get a ruling, I wish, I wish we knew the decision right now on what was going to happen in Longmont. And I think almost that we'd be doing a disservice to the community by not waiting on that decision. That being said, I'll just open it up to everybody else.
I just want to see if there's anybody else on the board that has any interest in adjusting the definition of the building unit question as far as proximity to residential units. And if not, I'm through. If somebody else, you know, agrees with that, then I'd like to see.
Any support for a redefinition of building?
Okay.
Hang on. Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'm very sympathetic to a lot of the concerns that were brought forth. You do also have to realize that we are all citizens of Colorado Springs. We are all uncles and fathers and mothers, that we do have the same concerns that you do. So I just wanted you to realize that we're not detached from this process and that we are listening and we are concerned. So I just wanted to state that, that we're not detached.
Yeah, it's kind of ironic. It'll probably turn out that Ultra's wells, test wells, will turn out dry and all this is mute. There's no oil in this county and city, anyway. But that being said, we have spent more time and education on this issue. And I've been on this commission for five and a half years in any item we've ever addressed. So we're pretty knowledgeable. And we're also knowledgeable of the parameters and the preview that we have to operate under. It'd be nice that I had the ultimate of authority of a governor or president or whatever where I could wave a wand and do damn near anything I want, but it's not working that way.
You would love that.
I would love that. You'd be gone. But what this ordinance culminates in is an awful lot of work and review and flat process that goes through under those parameters. And we've tried to tweak and play with it to keep as much safety and concern with the city without just throwing a grenade in the middle of the thing and say, screw it, we're going to do whatever we want. We've chosen to try to be reasonable and give advice to the council. And I'm sure all of you that testify, and I'm sympathetic to a lot of that. I have a good friend that has eight wells on his property, and there's issues involved with that. The main issue, he makes a hell of a lot of money, and that kind of pisses me off. But the rest of it is, there's some traffic in mostly farmland. That being said, it's really the council's responsibility, and I think it's with the review that we've had and the information that we've absorbed, to be able to pass that on objectively. And hopefully, your comments to council will carry some weight. I'm beginning to wonder how much weight we really carry other than we are passing on an ordinance that we've reviewed. And hopefully, that'll, and our comments can be heard in their chambers also. So that being said, I think we've all conscientiously really put a lot of time and effort into this to try to make it right.
I just wanted to say that one of the things that, as various litigation gets resolved around the state and we have more of an idea of what we're able to do and what we're not able to do, we can always come back and revisit these. I mean, this is not the final draft. It's not the Ten Commandments or anything. We, if there's something that we find out as a city that's deficient in this ordinance after we've seen the operations, there's, we have the ability in our democracy to change these things. And if... And if we find out that we have, there's some area where we have more ability to affect water quality or land, air quality, then we have the ability to do that. So I'm not as pessimistic as some might be because I, we have the ability. This whole process has been a reaction to something that came forward, which is drilling. We haven't had any to speak of before this. And I think this, the committee, the board that reviewed these things originally, and this board have been quite proactive in getting involved and trying to do the best we possibly can for the community. And so I'm going to support the ordinance, but I don't think that'll be the end of the story. I think we'll be back and visit some of these things as time goes on.
Yeah, I would just like to echo a lot of the same comments that I've heard from my fellow commissioners. I also felt a bit constrained by what the Oil and Gas Commission has basically saddled us with, which is not being able to, or not having much say as in the operational side of things. And also, you know, I, I don't think this is a perfect piece of legislation, but I think it is definitely better than what we had, which was nothing before this. I'll be supporting it, and with the understanding that as things progress and as court cases settle some of these issues, I think we'll have revisions to this come back before us for review in the future, probably in the near future.
Okay, there's a couple of things, points that I'd like to make, and I think for those of you who do not know, the Planning Commission is an advisory board to city council. We fully appreciate the fact that we are not elected officials and we are not accountable to the voters per se, but remember that we have no formal authority either. We simply advise and make recommendations to city council. Sometimes they support our recommendations and sometimes they reject them. But what they are asking us to do is to give it our best thought as citizens of this community. Now, everyone at this table has lived in Colorado Springs for a very long time, and we all have a passion for this community, and that's why we volunteer on this commission. We have all spent an awful lot of time meeting with the city staff and the city attorneys, telling us, who have been guiding us and telling us what our parameters are in this particular case. Now, I'm a political science major, one of my degrees is in that, and I think I probably have a greater appreciation for the limitations of government, federal government, state government, and local government. And certainly, in my five years on this commission, I have learned about the constraints of what the Planning Commission can and cannot do. I try to operate within those constraints and to be as creative as I can in dealing with the issues that come before us. As I read through this information and given the really good and consistent and 100% agreement that we have been getting from our legal staff, I think that these are a pretty good set of regulations. I would love to see more court cases, you know, help further define what latitude cities have and municipalities have vis-à-vis the state, but right now, we have to operate within certain parameters. I share many of my fellow commissioners' concerns about operational practices, but for now, I think this is a good piece of, a good ordinance. It is a good place for us to start and move forward, and I will be supporting it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number five CPC CA 12-0071, oil and gas regulations with the, I left off a zero. Some people are really picky. And that it's in conformance with the city comprehensive plan and comply with provisions of City Code 7.5.6.
Mr. Anderwald?
We request also that the motion contain the two modifications that show up on page eight of your...
Deleting the two definitions?
The definitions and the new section four.
Deleting the definition of operator and the definition of owner? Is that what we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the other one?
The addition of a new section four on page 10, authorizing appeals of oil and gas permitting decisions in accord with standard city practice.
I saw incorporate those two?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hand? All those opposed? Okay. The motion carries. As I recall, because this is a recommendation and it is a legislative item, there is no appeal. Is that correct? This is going to city council anyway?
This will automatically go to city council, correct.
Okay. I don't believe there are any other agenda items before this commission, and so, hearing no objections, we are adjourned.